I'm going to start meeting off with the religions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go into a moment's silence, I would just like to share that council and administration to keep our friends, family, and loved ones in Florida. Can I have one moment's silence, please?
Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Heising.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counselor Tiarina.
Here.
We have five members present. We have a four.
Thank you. Council has had time to go over the prior meeting minutes. Can we have a movement on this?
I think the motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Next, we do have someone wishing to address council. We have our superintendent of Waseon Schools, Mark Armstrong. And Mark? Wow, I just totally did a back in the question. I'm sure Mark Robinson would like that, but sorry, he's too fast, sorry. Troy Armstrong, I am so sorry about that. That's kind of funny. And our new finance, is it?
Treasure.
Treasure, okay. You have finance, you have a treasure.
And I'm Matt Dave Fleming.
What is your first name?
John.
Okay, Kamen? Kamen, Kamen?
It's Kamen.
Why does that have to be difficult? Come on up.
So, thanks. To be brief, I wanted to introduce John to council. John's our new school treasurer, started with us on August 1st officially. Bridged some time in two school districts between Gibsonburg and Waseon during the month of July to keep us on board and heading in the right direction. So, let John just tell you a little bit about himself.
Good evening. Thanks for having us today. It's good to meet all you. It's great to be in Waseon. It's kind of weird how things work out. Troy and I actually met 20-plus years ago when he became the principal at the building where my wife teaches in Springfield. And then later, I started at Springfield, he left. And I left Springfield, he came back. So, I don't really know. But it all worked out that there was a vacancy here at Waseon, and Troy gave me a call and let me know that Waseon was looking. So, came and talked to the board, it all worked out. It's great. I'm excited to be here and work with everybody at the school and in the area, so.
Welcome to Waseon.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's a great city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was telling mayor when we first walked in, I am a little bit familiar with Waseon and this part of Ohio. Back in a long, long time ago, when I was a lot younger, I worked for Pepsi-Cola and Fulton County was one of my territories that I did a lot of work in. So, geographically at least, I'm familiar with the territory. And so, it is nice to come somewhere that I at least recognize, you know, know where some of the streets are and things like that, so.
So, Coke probably soon will concession stand.
We do have a Pepsi contract.
All right, there you go.
I'm glad you hired Pepsi.
Does anybody have any questions or anything that you'd like to ask?
Do you have any goals or, you know, I mean, I know that you probably will take some time to get a lay of the land, so to speak, but.
Right, right. And that's exactly my focus, starting out, probably the first, you know, 90 days or so. And my 90 days are just about up. But the board and Troy and Dave Fleming, who I took over for, kind of put together a plan to turn the district around financially and get a look on more solid ground. So, you know, my focus is to execute that plan and get Waseon schools back to where it should be financially, so.
It's not a great time to be coming into that kind of work. I mean, I was very grateful for.
And one of the reasons that it was, I feel it was a good fit for me to come here. Six years ago, I became the treasurer of Gibsonburg Schools. And Gibsonburg, it was almost a mirror image of where Gibsonburg was at financially, situation with their health insurance. It's almost like deja vu. I have experience in executing a financial plan and staying on budget. So, it's really tied to my experience, plus maybe Troy won't leave now that I'm here. I don't know.
We'll soon find out.
See if Savannah comes calling again.
No, no, we're good, we're good.
So, but. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, the other piece was, it started with Brandon and I sitting down and having a cup of coffee together. And just knowing that during the past levy campaign, there are community members who feel like the school district doesn't support city and city council, and vice versa. City doesn't support the school district. And I wanted to publicly be able to have our two entities say to the community, that's not true. But whether we always agree on everything, that's never going to happen in any society that everybody agrees on every single topic. But the city of Waseon supports the school district really well. And the school district supports the city. One simple example is anytime the Waseon record directors get ahold of me, either Hugo or Matt, say, hey, can you send this flyer out to our parents? That day, it's an email, sent out to all of our parents, and they have a much greater participation rate because we're doing that. No one has to make paper copies, no one has to sort those paper copies out, no one has to pay for those paper copies, away it goes. When we had a freezer go down, I called Matt and said, hey, you got a freezer out at the parks, out at Biddle, that we could use if we have to put some product in? He said, yes, it's unplugged, I'll go plug it in. I'm like, don't plug it in quite yet, we may need it. But those are the real simple cooperations that exist that people don't really know that take place on a daily basis. The fire department, the police department, the fact that the city provides our school resource officer. In the state of Ohio, that doesn't really happen a lot. You know, it's way back, Mr. Torbett writing grants for that position, and the district being in financial trouble, and everyone was in '08 and '09 during the recession, and the city picked that up and still to this day pays for our school resource officer, which is huge. And so, there's just a ton of cooperation that goes on. And I wanted to be able to publicly make sure people out in our INTV world, out in our, those who read the minutes, those who read newspaper, press, that they know that city council and the city supports Waseon schools, and Waseon schools support the city in totality. So, that was my main purpose today, get you introduced to John, but then also just to publicly say to everybody, hey, no, that's not true. I think Brandon and I over coffee, you know, things that he had heard, things that I had heard, you know, just there were rumors out there that just aren't true about our relationships. So, I wanted to just be absolutely 100% clear that it's a supportive relationship, and it goes both ways, so.
Yeah, it definitely does. I mean, Saturday mornings, you open up your gym doors, you allow our WRA kids to come in, and you have to have custodian there. I mean, it is back and forth. We have the, some of the activities in the park, you guys to be able to use tennis court for the tennis teams, things like that. Soccer, there's just so much that if you don't work together, I mean, and council, ever since I came on, it's okay to agree to disagree. But if you move forward for the betterment of the cause, which the cause of choice is for the kids and the city. So, if you can agree to disagree, move forward. Sometimes we go not so well, but in the long run, the only one that benefits is kids and citizens. So, I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, strong.
And Brandon, thank you for having coffee and getting your questions answered.
Yeah, we had a conversation once.
That's the only way you're going to learn, if you go to the source, you know, so that's great.
Strong schools, strong community, strong community, strong schools. And that's what attracts people.
It does.
To Waseon is our city and everything we have to offer, and our schools.
It's still amazing.
And our churches are the third.
Conferences, schools.
Triad there.
Churches, you know, community parks, all of those things that people look at. It's amazing. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Troy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Let's see, department head reports, I don't know if anybody had anything they're going forward this week. We have some of those three.
It's October, so it's fire prevention month. As Troy was saying, we'll be in the schools, we'll be in all the schools this month. We'll have the safety trailer out with the kids. And that also includes the Pettysville School at New Horizons. And then Halloween's coming upon us, so there'll be donuts and cider at your trick-or-treat at the fire station.
Is your truck going to be out again?
Yep.
That's always a winner.
To be announced, though.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Nothing before this time.
Assistant Chief? Nothing?
Nope.
Everything is great?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for our assistant chief? All right, good job, it's easy. Welcome back.
Kevin told him, say nothing. Don't make eye contact.
Just go back and forth in your chair.
As you can see, Brunel Street is wrapping up. We're almost fully done with that.
It looks great.
Washington Street Waterline is wrapping up as well. That is almost finished. I'm not sure exactly where they were today, but we're getting very close to having that completed. Talked with Scott Smith, he's redoing our star, the sign. He's redoing the book portion of it and updating the candles, because if you remember last year, we had someone decide to close the book, literally.
Was that last year or two years ago? I think it was 20.
I thought it was two years.
2020.
Yeah.
Because I know where I was when that happened.
You were close by, weren't you, Mary? Close by.
As you can see, the sidewalks are progressing on Shoup Avenue, which started at the ODOT building and working their way south. We're hoping to be able to connect with Dollar General this year, as long as we are able to get product and the okay from M.A.S. Luther, because I would like to keep, I don't want to put the sidewalks right next to the curb.
Yeah, let's not do that.
I don't like that, it's kind of a nightmare.
Right.
But in order to push it back, I've got to put it on part of their property, so we need to get that okay. We'd like to keep it in line where it's at right now. It's just a process of getting them to say, okay, let's do it. So, we're hoping to have that finished up, and he should be able to get it done by the end of the week if everything goes okay. Numerous other projects going on, but nothing that I can think of that needs to be reported right now. Someone has questions for me?
I'll go ahead.
They, I saw that they tore down the Camois building. Are we, do we have to support it anyway over there? Or is it all, it's all private?
That's all private. We have had several demolition permits coming in. We've got another one that came in today.
Okay.
For another house that's being demolished on Corner Sycamore and Bottom. And then we still have the three other houses that we're waiting for the contracts to be awarded through the state to get those properties demolished. The one at Elm and Detroit, one on Chestnut Street, and then there's another one on Adiki Street that is using grant funds to pull those properties down. That's super forthcoming, I'm glad.
The only time I think like with Camoas is if they need to get into our system for something or whatever, then it could.
Open up for us to come, yeah.
If they request any new softments or anything like that.
Yeah, I didn't know if like sanitary or whatever, or you had to do anything.
It's when, it should be in all of the permits, and that's when they come in and they try to make sure that it goes in code.
Nice. Cool.
I was just going to ask about the parking lot behind the chamber. I didn't drive down there, but I had seen they were doing some work. Are they done with that?
Other than the striping.
Okay.
Yeah, we had them do it at the same time, and it was roughly $53,000 to do the parking lot and the parking stalls for that. If we would have done that at a separate time, it would have been closer to $100,000 to get that done.
That's great, that'll be.
It definitely needed to be done, because you could have parked a small bus in a few of those models that were in that parking lot.
And more striping, that correct?
Yeah.
And we're also doing that.
Well, no, we're not, it's part of the contract.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
And Brunel?
Yep.
Was the unlimited trash drop off a success? Do we know how many dumpsters were?
I have not, I have not heard the number, but from what I gather, there was a steady flow of people.
It wasn't human, I was like, oh. You missed it, it was a whole week log. Oh my gosh, that was their day one.
And then maybe Jamie and maybe Keith, have you guys heard any whispers about dirt being moved or airline trails at all, you know, as far as the housing project?
They've got, while I was in training last week, I got an email that the EPA has approved their site plans for the sanitary and water hookup, so it should be just a matter of time, and they should be starting on that. I think he was hoping to get it started this month.
All right, thank you.
I wonder how long they'll be able to do that before the.
He was concerned, because I know the asphalt plant shuts down usually first part of December, so.
Any of that heavy machinery, I've heard from the superintendent, is he okay with it being parked in front of his house?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right in his driveway.
We'll make sure it's got Christmas decorations or something.
Well, council hasn't had a chance to see her now, it is pretty neat. I went down on Friday, had my granddaughters in the back, and told Keith we rolled the windows down, they put their hands up like on a roller coaster, and away we went. And just, it's really a nice sight to see it done, and I seen the people out planting seed, and it was just, it's a good thing, so. And I'm glad to see that businesses are able to utilize this dirty garbage. That was huge. Hey, thank you, Keith. Jamie?
So, I've been working on our 2023 budget. I've got the worksheet prepared to hand out to the department, I just haven't gotten it out yet. And I'm asking them to be returned by the end of October, so then we can schedule some meetings to go over those eventually. Also, sent you our month-end reports for September. Income taxes still doing well, it's 13% over last year. And so, I guess that's all I have for right now. Any questions for Jamie?
Any thought on what you attribute that to, Jamie? I mean, there's no new business, no.
I believe it's because of the reduction in our tax credit for people working outside of the city.
Thank you.
And didn't we get rid of the levy for the pool? It wasn't personally, that debt's starting to sustain itself this year, and the pool levy was over, and we were able to start sustaining that, it wasn't coming out of general fund.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. And Tom is on a date with his wife for his anniversary tonight, so we have others.
Then I can have no updates.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. The only thing I think that I was going to, I guess we'll go into committee reports and have the utility committee for that discussion.
That is me. We met again to, for a very brief meeting to make a decision as far as which choice we wanted to bring forward, and I know we've talked about it kind of at length, but the decision that we came up with was to stay with the trash tags for the next contract. And we did take a, if you want to call it, a slice of feedback from the public, and really to go with the other option, which would be a more modern system of trash collection, that would be the bin system, which would include curbside recycling. In order to do that, you know, it would have to be across-the-board charge to all residents. So, it seemed like there were still enough people that were on board with the trash tags, that that is the better choice this time.
Okay. The only question I had on this is a recommendation, and I totally understand who's going with the tags, is what the, after the survey. But it says the city entered into a five-year contract for residential waste pickup, and the contract will not be different, we just don't have that in place. So, I'm wondering if council is wanting to move forward with the contract or just your recommendation on staying with the tags tonight? Because we don't have that contract.
Just a recommendation for tags?
So, we will amend the utility report for the recommendation. I know the five-year contract, I don't know if we have to move on it because it's the same, but I think it would be a renewal of that contract, because it's the same, but we still don't have it, correct?
Right, because we were, originally, you allowed me to put out for bid on the three different options. Now that we've selected the options, now we have to have legislation, I believe, to accept that contract, and we will have to do that at the next meeting.
Are we, are we good on the timeline of getting it done, then?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone, I wonder if anyone had any questions, because some have been part of all the discussions, and some have missed some of the discussions as to how we've gotten to that decision.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would like to say that, thank the utility committee for all their efforts moving forward, because it was quite a project. So, thank all the people.
I thought the engagement of the community was right.
I overheard, someone overheard me talking about trash to someone, and they said, how do you know so much about trash? I thought, that's all that I've been talking about is trash. I got all the numbers, if you need me to, you know, bring anything up. But we were very, I feel like very blessed that they did come back with the $1.30 a tag, because we did not expect that. We were expecting it to possibly be doubled. So, you know, to lock that in again at this time, maybe in five years, people will, you know, be interested in a, you know, modern system, but at this time, there are enough people that, you know, would prefer to stick with that, that that's kind of the better choice, as far as we were concerned as a committee.
I'm kind of impressed that you had 866 responses, I think that's pretty cool.
And to be honest, the bin, the cost of the bins, I feel like it was a great number. It was not a high number, but, you know, for all of the residents that go through very little trash, obviously, they don't want to pay that. If we, you know, we calculated the tag sales per year per average resident, and really, they would be paying about the same amount for the bin system and have curbside recycling offered, but you have the rest of the, you know, the residents that would be paying more. And they would not like to move forward with that, I do believe, so.
Okay. So, I guess I am, I am looking for a amended recommendation that it does not include the five-year contract from the, from council tonight.
So, do we have to vote to amend it? Or do we just?
Just to amend it, to read, yeah.
Okay, well, I will, I will vote to just recommend that we use the tag system.
I'll second that.
Recommendation that the city move forward with the tag system for residential waste pickup moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five DA, zero N.A.'s, motion carries.
Thank you. And under first reading, we have resolution 2022-23, which is a resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Waseon on behalf of the state of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its, which fund is that, Jamie?
Hi, I'm Capitol.
Thank you. Capital Fund. Tom was in it. For the CE22Y, CE23Y Brunel Street rebuild with the proceeds of taxes exempted of the state of Ohio.
Make a motion to place resolution 2022-23 on first reading?
I'll second that. Motion to place resolution 2022-3 on first reading moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Five DA, zero N.A.'s, motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-24 is a resolution to amend ordinance 2021-14, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the director of finance to increase or decrease certain line account appropriations within the various funds listed within the year of 2022.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion to place resolution 2022-24 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, Fran. Jamie, I didn't do a very good job of explaining that during committee, the whole, could you give us a quick summary again?
Yeah, so, it is to take the fire and EMS budget line out of the general fund and into their own fund. We had approved it at the end of 2021, but the state had it approved for us to free that refund until just now. I just received an email from them in August that is allowing us to free that refund. So, it's just moving it from the general to the new fund.
Thank you.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five DA, zero N.A.'s, motion carries.
Resolution 2022-25 is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county office.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to place resolution 2022-25 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Chamberlain. Any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Five DA, zero N.A.'s, motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing on the second or third reading. Under new business, we have a couple of items. The first one is Triangle of Processing Inc., 206 North Fulton Street. They applied for a transfer of their D5L liquor license from Sullivan Rock Holding Company LLC. So, if we don't act, then they will get their transfer. Any discussion at all? I'm not going to be one of the drinks that we talked about at the step move. They make some very nice packets there. Okay, this next item is a motion to accept local government funds, and Jamie did hand me a reading here. It's moved at above name. Nothing is filled out tonight. Subdivision waived any hearing before the Fulton County Budget Commission regarding apportionment of the undivided local government fund pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 5757, and agreed to the Fulton County Budget Commission alternate plan of apportionment of said local government fund on the basis of need and prior year's apportionment, and further agree to accept this sum of $175,766.63 for the undivided local government fund as above named subdivision share of undivided local government fund.
Interesting.
Interesting.
What does it mean?
Jamie?
So, they're basically estimating that our portion from the state for the local government fund is $175,000 next year. We're just accepting their estimate. We've already received $155,000 through September this year. So, I'm assuming that we're going to receive more this year, and we'll probably end up receiving more next year as well, more than the sub $175,000.
Based on this year for next year, is that estimate pretty close?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to?
We have done it.
Yes, a name of a movement and seconded by.
Okay, I will move that we accept that estimate.
I'll second.
Motion to accept local government funds moved by Council Heising and seconded by Council Tirina. Any discussion? Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. I have nothing else on the new business, anyone else? Okay, great, well, all we need is a motion to pay the bills.
So, I'll make.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Schneider. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Great, motion for adjournment, please.
I'll make that.
I will second.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Council Tirina and seconded by Council Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.